The defense attorney, you will be asked questions to rat to the officers? I don't think so, right?
No.
Eventually. I'll let Rebecca run through the procedures or whatever, wherever you are in this process, and then we can go from there.
All right. I'm Assistant City Attorney Rebecca Hammack. This matter is being heard or held before the License and Health Committee of the Common Council of the City of West Dallas. This license hearing is being held pursuant to Section 125.12 of the Wisconsin statutes in the matter of the complaint against Mr. Bomback and Mr. Bald doing business as the spot. Let it be noted for the record that all of the committee members are present. You guys could state your names for the record.
Honor McCollum.
Alderman St. Eric Risham.
Alderman Reinkie.
Alderman Krzyzewski.
Alderman Roat. One Assistant City Attorney is prosecuting this matter, and myself, as another Assistant City Attorney, is acting as an advisor to the committee. For the record, we will now have everyone else state their appearances.
I'm Nick Sirwin. I'm acting as the prosecutor for the, um, this offense.
I'm Attorney Patrick Ross, representing the spot and also Mr. Bomback and Mr. Bald.
The nature of this hearing is for the committee to make a decision as it relates to the complaint against the spot which has been filed with this committee. Under the provisions of Section 125.12 of the Wisconsin statutes and Section 9.02 Sub-20 of the West Dallas Revised Municipal Code, this hearing has been convened for the purpose of determining whether any of the charges against the spot are true and to make a recommendation based upon that determination. This committee will examine all the evidence concerning the charges through inquiry to both sides. The committee will evaluate and then impartially weigh the evidence. It will determine whether or not any of the charges have been proven, relying solely upon the evidence introduced at this hearing. This hearing is open to the public. A verbatim record of the proceedings is being made by audio recording. You are represented by counsel. Assistant City Attorney is here as a prosecutor and will present the case against you to the committee. I am present as an illegal advisor to the committee. I'm here to advise the committee on any questions of law and procedure that they may have, and I may also direct questions to witnesses on behalf of the committee. You, through your attorney, may present evidence, call and examine witnesses, cross-examine witnesses against you, and such witnesses will be sworn in. Both the complainant and licensee shall be limited to one hour each for presentation of testimony, not including cross-examination or questions from the committee or city attorney representing the committee. The chair may extend that time for presentation of testimony to assure a full and fair hearing. Subject to a motion for consideration by the full committee made by a member of the committee, the chair has the final ability to rule upon all questions, objections, and motions as to procedural matters, admissibility of evidence, and similar procedural issues. All objections, questions, and motions should be directed to the Chair, Mr. Vitale. You may testify on your behalf with regard to the charges against you. However, what you say will be considered as evidence. Further, if you do testify, you may be cross-examined. I'm sure your attorney's already reviewed all of this with you. If a charge or charges against you are proven, you are advised that the committee may recommend to the common counsel that your license be suspended, revoked, or not renewed, and that the common counsel may accept or reject such recommendation and may determine upon such recommendation whether your license should be suspended, revoked, or not renewed. The complaint, I believe you have received a copy of this, counsel.
We have.
And just for the record, there's actually an amended complaint that I've passed out. I believe I left them at the table, and so we'll be proceeding on that amended complaint. After you're done reading here, I'd ask for at least that very last section, which is going to be Section 12, is the new section. If there's an admission or denial to that paragraph specifically.
Okay. So you have a copy of the amended complaint as well, counsel?
Yes.
And you did receive a summons, or your client did?
We were properly served.
Okay. I now request that the clerk append, as exhibits to the record, a copy of the summons and complaint, together with a copy of the affidavit of service. And then I believe, Attorney Sirwin, you're asking just for 12, and you're assuming we're going to litigate the rest? Is that what you're saying?
We are, my intent would be to litigate all of it. The only addition is an incident that happened on August 28th. I believe the last time we were here was around August 30th, so this was an incident that hadn't been alleged yet. It has now been alleged.
Okay. And so previously, was a denial entered on the rest of the matter?
There was entered, and to be consistent, we'll also enter denial at this point regarding the number 12 on the amended complaint.
Understood. At this time, Attorney Sirwin, the prosecuting attorney will present his evidence as to charges before the committee.
Thank you. And just, I guess, procedurally then, I have, I will go through the complaint in terms of the numbered allegations. They should be specifically numbered in terms of an allegation per numbered event, so they're not going to be split up. But I am going to go, to some extent, out of order because I have one officer that will testify to a few incidents, so I'm going to have the other officers testify first and potentially get out of here and back to their normal duties. Okay?
Cool.
Very first, I will call Officer Scott Poklaskny. If you just want to grab a seat. You squirming? Do you have that down?
Yes, I do. Officer, if you would, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Sir, can you state and spell your name for the record?
First name Scott, S-C-O-T-T, last name Poklaskny, P-O-K-L-A-S-N-Y.
How are you employed?
City of West Dallas as a patrol officer on second shift.
All right. And how long have you been a patrol officer for the City of West Dallas?
About six years.
Any other law enforcement experience?
Around nine months at the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department before this.
Got you. All right. Were you working as an officer back on January 12th, 2021?
Yes.
All right. Around 21:27 hours, what time would that be in civilian time?
Around 9:27 PM.
All right. And around 9:27 PM, were you dispatched out to a call?
Yes, I was.
And what was that call in regards to?
Dispatched out to the Spotlight for a disorderly conduct call, multiple subjects fighting at the bar.
All right. And just for the committee's reference, we're talking about number six on the amended complaint. All right. So on January 12th, 2021, around 9:30, you went out to the Spotlight, you said, correct?
Yes.
Where is that at?
6426, maybe?
Sure.
Greenfield Avenue.
All right. And what was going on when you got there?
When I first arrived on scene, there was a couple of other officers that had beat me there. I was coming from farther away, but there was one, turned out to be an employee. One of the exact answers was on the ground, trying to be taken into custody by multiple officers outside screaming and throwing a fit, essentially.
Was she resisting arrest at that time?
She was, yeah.
Okay. How many people were creating the disturbance inside of the establishment?
There was two employees that were the primary issue.
Okay. Two of the, were they the dancers?
Exotic dancers, yes.
Okay. Based on your investigation and the investigation of the other officers, what had occurred?
Sounds like the two dancers that were having the issue had finished their shift. They worked earlier that night. I don't remember exactly what time they got done, but they were hanging out essentially at the bar after the shift. It sounded like they were talking to other customers, which from what I was told is generally not allowed because then they can kind of source the tips from customers even though they're not working. So the bartender that was working at the time had asked, excuse me, both of them to leave, and they refused.
All right. And when they refused, what occurred?
So they got pretty loud. One was the primary issue at first. She was arguing with one of the owners, had been asked to leave again, obviously refused, and then was asked to leave by the bartender again, and then she had reached over the bar and grabbed the bartender by the hair.
All right. And was that bartender Audrey Bomback?
Yes.
Okay. And so Audrey Bomback is tending bar at that time and is telling the, at least one of the dancers to leave because it was after her shift?
Correct, yes.
And that's when the other dancer reaches over and grabs her by the hair?
Yes.
All right. What happens next?
The security officer, I'm not sure what you'd call him, that was working there, tried to get in between it and break up the fight. He ended up pulling her, the dancer that was pulling Audrey's hair, pulling her away and kind of was dragging her essentially down the bar, trying to get her out of the business. Bartender was kind of like, she was pulled into the bar somehow, ended up with a kind of abrasion on her arms from getting pulled into the bar, I'm assuming. Dragged her outside at some point. I don't think we ever determined who, but one of the dancers had struck Ed in the head as he was trying to also calm the situation down.
Ed being Edward Bomback?
Yes.
All right. All right. So Edward Bomback is also struck in the head as this fight is going on?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Any damage to the property?
Yeah. During it, it's kind of, both dancers, from what it appeared, had knocked over chairs. One of them picked up a pool cue, kind of swung it around, hit the, like that rectangular light that's up above the pool table, broke probably some of the glass, trim on that. And then one of them managed to knock over, like the dart machine into a wall, which appeared to be pretty heavy, so they had to go after that.
And, um, excuse me while I'm just catching up with myself here. And did you have contact with these individuals?
Uh, yes.
All right. Just one second. Did you or any other officers make any observations about their, if they had ingested any alcohol or consumed any substances?
That I can't say for sure.
Did you have any information about how long they had been there or how long they had worked at that location?
It was just a full shift. I don't think I ever asked to clarify how many hours it was.
Very good. And were any citations issued, if you know?
Yeah. I believe there was at least a battery citation, disorderly conduct. One of the dancers had him on six or seven grams of weed, marijuana, on her. So there was, I think, disorderly conduct at least for both, and then one got the battery and another one with the marijuana possession.
All right. And when, do you know when that marijuana possession was discovered?
I believe that was, I didn't make that, it was people that were dealing with the one that was outside, so that was once she was taken into custody.
Okay. Once she was taken into custody, they found that I'm out of marijuana. Do you remember how much marijuana it was?
It was around seven, six or seven grams.
Six or seven grams, all right. Have you investigated drug offenses previously?
Yes.
All right. What kind of experience do you have with drug offenses?
I guess we run through it, obviously, quite a bit on patrol, so.
Okay. I don't want to get into too far-fetched with this question, but I want to make sure it's clear to the committee because I don't know how, their knowledge of marijuana or the quantity of marijuana, is that, was it packaged like single use or single use quantity or?
That I'm not sure. I didn't recover enough of the person.
Very good.
Couldn't see.
I have no further questions for this officer.
None from the, myself.
The defense says, oh, the counsel has any questions?
I just, I just have it to, and I think I'll follow, do a follow-up to yours. Six or seven grams is about how much?
Uh, maybe like a small little, around that much.
Okay. So if you compared it to a pack of cigarettes, how many cigarettes, you familiar with cigarettes?
Sure.
How many cigarettes would it be?
I guess they're a different shape and size, but definitely, I mean, you could fit it inside of the pack and there'd still be more room left, but.
Okay. And just for the record, I think we are video recorded too, but the officer held up, I mean, your hands were in a golf ball size?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, a golf ball size, I guess would be a good comparison.
Smaller than a golf ball or bigger than a golf ball?
I didn't see that specific. Sometimes it's flattened out depending on how it was, but I guess that'd be a good estimate.
Okay, very good.
Did Ed cooperate with you?
He did.
Did Audrey cooperate with you?
Yes.
Did they provide you video?
Uh, yes. I don't believe, I reviewed it, there would have been another officer.
Do you know who called the police on that incident?
I do not. It came from the business.
Okay. No further questions for this officer.
Just very briefly follow-up. So when it came from the business, do you mean it came from a patron or it came from the actual, like, establishment or employees of the business?
I believe it was the employees.
Very good. Nothing further. I don't know if the committee has any follow-up or if Rebecca has any follow-up.
Rebecca, any committee members, any questions of this time? Any questions?
I do not. Alderman. Very good. And then I would ask, if we're all done with Officer Poklaskny, we can let him go. I don't know if you drove with anybody, but.
Yes. No, I did not. Been on patrol, sorry.
All right. Any objections?
I do have more officers, yes. Just this particular officer, he's going to cut loose if nobody has any objection to that.
No objection. Thank you, officer.
All right. Thank you. City calls Officer Dufek.
Hi.
How you doing? Just to square you in, and then I'll start asking some questions.
If you want to raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Can you state and spell your name for the record?
Jeffrey Dufek, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y-D-U-F-E-K.
And how are you employed?
A police officer for the City of West Dallas.
All right. How long have you been a police officer for the City of West Dallas?
Just over six years.
Very good. Were you working as an officer back on March 14th, 2021?
I was.
All right. And what was your normal shift?
11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
All right. Were you dispatched out to a certain location around 11, was it 2319 hours is about 11:19, right?
Yes.
All right, 11:19. Where were you dispatched out to?
Yes, we were dispatched out to the Spotlight.
In the City of West Dallas?
Yes.
City of Wisconsin?
Yes.
All right. Why were you dispatched out there?
For a report of a disorderly subject that was pounding on one of the doors to the business, allegedly threatening the staff and patrons with a firearm.
Okay. And just for the record, we're talking about number seven on the amended complaint. All right. So did you go to the location?
I did.
Did you make any observations when you went there?
When I arrived on scene, another officer had already detained the subject.
He was still on scene?
Yes, he was.
All right.
I went inside and spoke with the bartender.
All right. And when that other officer arrived on scene, do you know what the guy was, was to be disorderly, what he was doing?
He was yelling very loudly, pounding on the west employee entrance door.
If he had, you guys were?
Yeah.
The same thing you were calling for?
Yes.
All right. All right. So you go inside and try to figure out what's going on. Who do you talk to?
I spoke with the bartender, Audrey Bomback.
All right. And what did Audrey tell you?
So basically, she said the gentleman in question arrived at the bar approximately an hour prior to the call for service. He walked in, she served him a few drinks. While serving him, he began getting extremely belligerent and loud, so she took his drink away from him. He started to speak with some of the other patrons at the bar. She thought a fight may occur inside the bar, so she had the doorman or bouncer escort the gentleman outside and lock him out of the business.
Okay. And that's when he began to pound on the doors?
Yes.
All right. I believe you testified or had said there was some allegations of threatening some violence. Did you find any weapons or anything on him?
No firearms or anything like that. The bartender didn't know anything about there allegedly being a firearm or observing a firearm.
Okay. And when officers made contact with this guy who was there, did you make any observations or did the officers make any observations about his impairment or intoxication level?
Yeah. Officer Lukey spoke them a little bit while on scene. She observed him to have heavily, like, red and glassy eyes, heavily slurred speech, and the strong odor of ingested intoxicants emanating from his breath.
When you make those observations, first off, do you have any experience investigating alcohol-related offenses or OWIs?
I do.
Okay. What kind of experience do you have?
Well, I have gone through OWI, S and S T instructor school. I'm a drug recognition expert. I've gone through the Advanced Roadside Impaired Driving Course. I've gone through the in-house training for OWI investigations through the department. Just a few.
All right. So when you make observations like that, glassy eyes, slurred speech, and it indicated an odor of intoxicants, correct? Was there a modifier on that, if you recall, meaning light, medium, strong?
I believe it was strong.
Okay. What, if anything, would that kind of observations mean to you?
It's indicative of someone who is highly intoxicated.
And this individual, Ms. Bomback, had said that he was drinking at the bar until she cut him off, basically?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Do you know if any citations were issued?
We issued the subject a disorderly conduct citation.
All right. Very good. And nothing to the bar, correct?
No.
Very good. Let me just make sure I got everything. I have no further questions for this witness.
Counselor, do you have any questions?
Just a few follow-up. The bloodshot eyes, glassy, or glassy eyes and the strong odor of intoxicants, those are kind of the standard levels for what's called a DUI check, correct?
Well, I don't.
They're going to be indication of somebody drunk driving.
Yeah, in addition to, like, standardized field sobriety tests.
Okay. But they're one of your first signs that somebody's impaired to drive?
Right.
But the limit for driving is .08?
Correct.
So the difference would be that if the person isn't driving, are they necessarily, I guess, in your training and experience, if they're not driving, are they going to be intoxicated to a level of not understanding?
Upon further, speaking with the subject after arrest, he said that somebody had stolen his keys in the bar, and we spoke at the bar and we couldn't find his keys. He didn't know his address that he was going to or anything like that. Like, he was very, I guess, for lack of a better word, scatterbrained. Like, he couldn't produce a, a good sentence to where we could understand, like, where we needed to take him or what he was doing.
All right. So did the person have any mental health issues that you observed?
Not that I'm aware of.
You've been on duty for six years now, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to kind of go a little bit broader, but just to kind of get your input of what's kind of going on as he, and I meant to ask the other officer this, but forgot. Since the pandemic has started, have people been a little bit different or more aggressive?
I don't know if I could say that they've been more aggressive. I don't think that our calls for service have gone up as far as, like, disorderly subjects. I feel that our regular calls for service come in and, again, I don't think that people have been more disorderly than usual.
Okay. Have you noticed more attitude or anything in people you're dealing with?
Well, I work third shift, so there's always attitude in people I deal with, so not necessarily.
Okay. Yeah, you're in that shift that no matter what, you're always going to be confrontational, understand? But you did say she had told him that he was, could not drink anymore and that he needed to leave.
Yeah, I believe she, like, took his drink away, and initially, he, like, didn't even notice that his drink was taken away. So, and then she had the doorman come and escort him outside.
Okay. No further questions on this incident or this officer?
I have nothing further with this officer. I have a follow-up.
Chairman Vitale?
Yes.
Officer, I have a question. You listed quite a bit of experience with alcohol, assessing alcohol situations. If I heard correctly, there were three drinks served to this gentleman before he was asked to leave?
I don't, I don't think she, when I interviewed the bartender, she didn't say a specific number of drinks. She just said a couple.
Okay. So at most, two is a couple. Okay. So in your experience, could somebody get to that level of intoxication off of two drinks?
Well, it kind of depends on if they have, like, any other medications that they're taking or anything like that, but a normal, healthy person, typically not.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know, I would direct this with two, Nick, but was this gentleman intoxicated when he came in? And I know you wouldn't know, but.
I wouldn't know.
No, no, I'm asking.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry. Audrey, who was the bartender, we're going to put her on as a witness, so if you'd like to hold your question about that incident?
I will hold. Yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Any other follow-up?
You know, myself, really, in all fairness, we're talking about, you know, even if someone really takes some medical pill for any reason of their conditions, you know, even two drinks, two drinks, I believe, doesn't make a person very aggressive. I mean, in my, I mean, I have no experience on that, but the way I see it, I don't think a man or a woman with two drinks would cause a chaos. So, okay, go ahead.
I just want to follow up. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could, please. The customer basically claimed to have a firearm. Did he show at any time this firearm?
Nobody on scene observed a firearm with the subject, and additionally, we did not locate one on him.
I see. So he was just threatening?
Allegedly.
Sounds like. Thank you.
Any other follow-up from the committee? Just one, then, Mr. Chair, one point of clarification based on those questions. So I believe you testified to this, but how long about did Audrey say that this guy was there?
She said approximately an hour.
Okay. Nothing further.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Again, the symptoms that you indicated the customer having, could they be drug-related as well?
Without performing any further tests on him, I mean, everything's possible, but typically, the observations that I observed are indicative of alcohol intoxication.
Any further questions from the committee members? Thank you, Officer.
Thank you. If I could relieve some as well? That, okay?
Thank you, officer.
Thank you. Then we're going to skip some incidents, so we did six and seven, and I'm going to hold off on Officer K, who will be testifying about March 17th and the March 24th.
May 24th.
And May 24th and the May 7th. And I'm going to skip to Officer Wagner, who is going to be the July 22nd, which is going to be incident 11.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Sir, can you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Anthony Wagner, and that's W-A-G-N-E-R.
How are you employed?
Police officer with the City of West Dallas.[1651.83] Police officer with the city of West Dallas.
And how long have you been employed as a police officer for the city of West Dallas?
Approximately seven and a half years.
All right, were you working as an officer back on July 22nd, 2021?
I was.
All right, and what was your normal shift?
I worked second shift, which is 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
All right, and on that date, did you have an occasion to investigate an incident at the spotlight?
I did.
All right, what happened?
We got sent there for a report of a fight outside of the bar or inside of the bar or at the bar.
Do you remember when that fight allegedly had taken place?
Right around nine, a little after 9:00 PM, I believe.
Around nine o'clock-ish, okay. All right, who was involved in that fight, if you know?
It turned out to two employees, dancers that worked there. One employee, who I guess was a bartender, I believe. And then ended up being one of the owners was a victim in the incident.
So do you remember all the individuals that were? So we got two dancers, a bartender, and then the owner, you said?
Correct. I believe the other individual is a bartender. Otherwise, she's, may just be a frequent person at the bar. I'm not exactly sure of what her title is. But the two dancers were Savannah Williams and Zoe Henley.
Okay, and if you can give me kind of a general overview of what had occurred or what the investigation revealed? I'm not, I'm asking about the video in a moment. So just generally, what happened or why were officers there?
So the investigation revealed that there was a fight between the two females that I listed, Zoe Henley and then Savannah Williams, who were dancers. They became upset at the staff, the bartender staff that was working, because they were under the impression they could work an additional shift after theirs ended. They were told that they couldn't work another shift and became upset and started a physical altercation over this.
Okay, and when you arrived on scene or when officers arrived on scene, do you identify or find those individuals?
Yeah, Savannah and Zoe were walking on 65th Street, heading towards a car that was parked on the side of the road. And another officer stopped out with them to investigate this incident.
And when officers made contact with these two individuals, did they make any observations about their person or if they had consumed anything?
I believe the officers that... I dealt with them very briefly. The one female, Zoe, I assisted Officer Baumgart in detaining her. She appeared highly intoxicated. And I believe she either requested or we got an ambulance there for her based on her condition. And I assisted in securing her to the ambulance gurney because she was uncooperative.
All right, were both female dancer individuals cooperative or uncooperative to officers?
Yes. And again, like I said, I had to assist one officer in securing the one female to the gurney. I believe other officers had to multiple times tell the other officer to step away because she kept trying to come over by us.
The other individual?
Yeah, the other, I'm sorry, the other female was... But other officers reported they both appeared intoxicated.
Would you have categorized their behavior as resisting police interactions? Or was that not, did it not rise to that level?
I don't know if I'd say it rose to resisting. It was just more, they seemed intoxicated and uncooperative, at least from my experience with them. I was very briefly dealing with them specifically.
And did you review surveillance video from the incident?
I did.
Okay, did you recover a copy of that surveillance video?
I did.
All right, so what I would intend to do at this point is play a portion of that video for the committee to see. I had set it up so it's going to play on that screen. I had thought about playing on a computer for the committee to watch here so it wasn't displayed so overtly for YouTube. But in discussions with the city attorney as well, I think it's best that we just play it here. And I guess if I could, I was intending to talk with the communications department prior to this point to make sure that we're all on the same page about how this would be displayed. And so actually, if I could run down there again, I knocked on their door and rang the doorbell, but they never answered.
Do you want to change it to call them?
Well, maybe that would work better. Thanks.
Here, thank you.
I usually they're watching, so I can just make an announcement. Maybe that would work. I don't know if that's best practice. Do you mind if I run down there just to try to get a hold of them? I just don't want the video to take up the entire YouTube screen. All right, give me one minute.
3:00 PM.
It must have forwarded the phone, so... Okay. Yeah, I'm going to pull it out real wide so nothing's detailed. Lovely, thank you. We're all good.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, so the message got to.
Give them a minute to get back down there.
What? It'll take me a minute to get it all set back up.
I'm looking forward to seeing you run down.
Pretty quick.
Nick, it was a good exercise.
Didn't get out of the office today. That would have been nice. There it is. I thought I had this set up. And so just to set a record here, I am only showing a portion of one of the videos, not all of the videos at the same time. Oops, that's exactly what I didn't want to do. With the intent of specifically tailoring it to the fight.
I'm going to have to step back so...
Sorry, yeah.
That's okay. The glare.
We can get the lights a second if you want to. All right. Oh, of course. Let's leave it as is so I don't break anything. So just for the record, the top timestamp is 21:10:52. And I'll play it here until about 14 minutes, almost 15 minutes is the timestamp I think. I'm not intending to ask any questions or go into any detail until after we're done. And so I'll ask Officer Wagner about what his investigation revealed after that point.
Do we have some lights that we can get to make it a little easier to see?
Yeah, the glare is horrible.
There you go. Oh, not all.
I wouldn't do it all on here because we're on YouTube.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
And there should not be sound as far as I'm aware. Applause there, 21:14:55 on the top timestamp. Again, this is only video two or camera two. All right, I'll just ask questions. I'm not intending to play any more videos so we can get the lights. Officer Kay, can you get the lights back on? All right, Officer Wagner, did you have a chance to watch that video and other videos from the bar?
I did.
All right, and I guess how did this, where did the fight start? Was this the beginning of the fight?
The initial part of it is on a different angle from this. It started, the two females in the video, the two black females, one's wearing an orange dancer's outfit, I guess, for a better, lack of a better term. And the other one is wearing the black dancer's outfit.
Okay.
That's, the blonde and the black is Savannah Williams. The one in the orange is Zoe Henley.
Okay.
They were initially on one side of the bar. And again, turns out there was an argument over whether or not they would be allowed to work an additional shift once theirs ended. They became upset about this. They came around from the east side of the bar to the west side of the bar. That camera angle kind of faces almost southeast within the bar, towards the front door and the stage. And they went after the other female that I, again, I'm not exactly sure what her status with the bar is, but her name is Simole Nai, I believe I'm pronouncing that correct.
Okay.
She was the shorter female with the pink shirt and shorts in the video that we saw. And they, those three started the physical fight with each other on the west side of the bar. And then from there, it kind of spilled out onto where the video, everyone entered the video from the bottom of the frame.
So the fight starts a few minutes or a little bit before, maybe not minutes?
Maybe a minute.
Maybe a minute, less than a minute. Okay, very good. Thank you for clarification. All right, and we see a guy, when this video starts, we see a guy actually take off. Was he a patron?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and then like halfway through the video, we see people stepping over chairs and leaving. Were they patrons?
I believe so, yes. Like I didn't speak with any of those people.
Sure, they were gone. And then we have two gentlemen, older gentlemen, wearing, what was that? Kind of blue shirt, one's in a plaid shirt. Who are they?
The two older gentlemen on camera, one is Ed Baumback, the owner, and Lonnie Bald, the other owner.
Okay, and then eventually, we see a guy with a white shirt come in and start wrestling and shoving one of the gals up. Do we know who that is?
I believe he was identified. I did not speak to him. I don't recall offhand what his name was.
Okay.
But I believe one of the other officers spoke to him at the time.
Do we know what relation he was?
I do not, I don't know.
You don't know if he's employee, friend?
I do not know.
All right, fair enough. All right, as fights going on, you watched this video and you identify some things that are important, at least to your investigation. I would like you, we've seen the video, what did you key in in the video?
Two of the big parts of the fight are that the female, Simole Nai, appears to be hitting the other female, Savannah Williams, with a black high-heeled shoe. This happens, I think, twice at two different points during the fight.
Kind of early on and then towards the end there when she...
Yeah, or in the middle. Yeah, and then at the, at the very end, she has the shoe again, but specifically hitting Savannah, who's wearing the black outfit. I believe it's two times during the, during the incident. When speaking with Savannah, she indicated that she was being hit with something. I believe, I don't recall if she specified a shoe or not, but she ended up having a cut to her face that required stitches that appeared to be from the high heel of the shoe.
Okay, you said there was two parts. So one is...
And then the other part being when the male, older male on the camera, that was identified as Ed Baumback, is struck in the head. Savannah Williams, again, the female in the black. This is kind of halfway through. There's like a pause and everyone's kind of separating. She goes back, she grabs a, what appears to be a glass off the bar. When she picks it up, it looks like a glass. And there's almost even a napkin stuck to the bottom. You know how bartenders put the glass on napkin? She goes over to Ed, hits him on the left side of his face. And as she does that, you can see him put his hand to his head and then pull it back and look at it, which is consistent with someone checking an injury for blood. And as the video goes on, you can see a red spot form in the same spot where he was struck. And when she actually hits him, if you look carefully on the video, you can see what looks like glass shattering as the, as the glass breaks.
Okay. And I don't need to get into specifics with names or who's pending with what charges, but any citations or charges sought?
Yeah, we referred three people to the district attorney's office for charges related to this incident.
All right, for criminal, potential criminal charges?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Just follow up one second. And is that video consistent with your recollection of how it looked when you first reviewed it?
Yes.
All right, accurate representation of the fight as you, as it was portrayed to you and that you saw at that time?
Yeah, it's consistent with what I, the video I watched initially.
And just for the record, I did provide counsel with a copy of zip drive there. And I would move this zip drive, that portion of the video, specifically from 21:10:52 to 21:14:55 into evidence. I'm not sure procedurally how, I believe the chair would probably have to accept that. If it's accepted or if there's an objection?
No objection.
Even objections or...
No objection.
No objections at this time?
No objection to that video being introduced. It's part of the reason we keep them.
So I'd mark that as, I guess I have it not marked yet, but I have a plaintiff's exhibit. Was there a part, something that got marked earlier?
The summons and complaint. And that usually gets the clerk's office.
Sure, okay, so I'll mark this as plaintiff's exhibit one or city's exhibit one. I'll cross that part out.
Nick, the committee will, or the chairman will accept as evidence for our suspensions of the license.
All right. All right, thank you. And then, let me get, just maybe make sure I have what I needed. Do you know how, how this call originated or who, who made the call?
I don't know.
You don't, all right. All right, I have no further questions at this time.
Any questions for the counselor?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll catch your question for you. You've been working for approximately seven years?
Yeah, seven and a half years.
Seven and a half years. And is, how long have you been in the district that this spot's in?
We don't have different districts in the city of West Dallas. It's just the city, so the whole time.
To your knowledge, over that time frame, has the owner of this spot, both Ed and Lonnie, been cooperative with the police?
I can't speak to times I wasn't there for. I will say that during my times or my experiences with them, I've never had any problems. They've been cooperative when I've dealt with them.
And in fact, the video system is from the bar?
Yep.
Did they give you any pushback on getting it?
No.
Did they give you any false information?
No.
In any of your times dealing with them, have they ever given you pushback?
No, every, anytime we've gone there to investigate something, I've personally never had any problems with Ed or Lonnie. They've been, when we've asked to see video, they've been upfront with it. There's never been any incident where they're uncooperative or refusing to let us see video.
And does that include even incidents that might not be related to the bar, but the person was at the bar? Or some other further investigation type that you are aware of?
In my experience, the one, I, I think the only time I've had to look at their video or stuff has been stuff related to the bar. So I can't say specifically either way on that question, that I can recall at least.
He asked the other question I'd like to ask you. You've observed probably your fair share of fights over the years.
Yeah, either in person or on video after the fight.
When you look at that video and you see Ed, who's, I believe, 78? And Lonnie, who's 77? Was there really much else they could have done?
I'm not sure how I can answer what they could have done.
Well, I mean, physically, I mean, because you saw those girls. They were pretty adamant at each other. I mean, would you say that the bar's response to that, trying to split them apart, and that was an appropriate response?
I will say that it appeared that they were trying to break up the fight rather than instigate it, if that's kind of what you're asking.
Yeah, that was more where I was going, is did the bar react appropriately to the situation that was created?
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, it's hard to say what they should have done, but it's like, I even wrote in my report, they, both Ed and Lonnie appear to be breaking it up. They, the instigators, neither of them appeared to be an instigator in the incident.
I have no further questions.
Just a brief follow-up based on that. You said there were some charges that were sought. Wasn't for either of the owners, correct?
No.
All right. I would assume the two dancers?
Correct.
And the third being generally who?
The female who was swinging the high-heeled shoe. The female who was swinging the high-heeled shoe.
Bartender or something like that?
Yeah, again, I'm not 100% sure what her, her status is.
Very good, nothing further.
Yeah, Officer Winer, I have a question in reference of, you've been in the force for seven and a half years, but you have no conciliations of any other activities for that locations, I mean?
Oh, I've been there for other calls before.
So have been other calls at that locations, right?
Yeah.
Because myself, I could have texted it, my neighbors called me about the fact of nuisance.
And Mr. Chair, I just want to be careful, because obviously the four corners of the complaint are what I'm alleging or what the city's alleging in this one, and I don't want you to consider too much beyond what's being presented as evidence, and so perceive as you see fit, I'm not trying to curtail anything, but I just want to make sure we're?
Yeah, we stay within the scope, I mean, I totally understand that, but just my question was, because being an alderman from the district, I mean, I knew that for years already, it's been often, I, there's been some, you know, police been showing up at that location. I don't know all the reasons, but they've been there, so, before your time, you know, that's, that's why I'm stating that.
Chairman Vitale?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions, now, the duration of the video that we watched, when were the police called?
I'm not sure exactly when.
Okay, was during that? Is there, is there a notation when they were called?
We would have an exact time that the WAPD dispatch center received a call. And I don't know that offhand, but that would be when we got the call, now that may be within a minute or so of how accurate their, the time on their camera is.
What I could do is I can look and have a conversation with the counsel about that and see if that's something that we're comfortable maybe stipulating to, if not, then you might never know.
Okay, my, my, my question was just based on the amount of time that this was going on to the time that the police were called and who called the police, to see if that action was actually taken, or if it was after the fact, when it was all said and done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, officer.
I want to expand on that, because it, to me, when that incident started, from the time the police got called, to the time the police responded, is very important to me, and I'd like to know that information if we can get it.
Man, I, I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question, the subjects that were involved in the fight, all of them were intoxicated, or were they intoxicated based on your observations?
Again, I had very little contact with the, I had contact with the, the two dancers very briefly in assisting another officer and stopping them and detaining them, and then helping the one get onto the gurney for the ambulance, but other officers noted that the two female dancers appeared intoxicated.
Okay, was it mentioned when their shift had ended?
I don't know offhand when that would have been, I assumed it would be about nine o'clock, because that's roughly when we got called, but?
So it was about the time their shift ended, then?
That's, that's what I understand, because that they became upset that they weren't allowed to work another shift.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, officer.
Another question was, was there, is there a bouncer that was there, or is it just the two owners that were there involved in this, trying to break it up?
I don't know if there was a bouncer working or not, I, I didn't talk to one myself, but I don't know if other officers did or not.
So we don't, so we don't know if that gentleman who was wrestling around with people, if he was employed by the bar, if he was just somebody that was affiliated with one of the persons?
I, I don't know that information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, officer.
As a follow-up, Alderman Grisham, are these employees allowed to drink during their shift?
If they're of age, yes.
So they can drink while they're performing as well?
Yes, if they're of age.
I see.
That's what I'm being, I'm being careful of, you can work there at 18 years old, but you can't drink.
Right.
Which is?
But I'm interested in why they were intoxicated, why were these women intoxicated?
Well, again, that's a matter of opinion, you know, they have a couple of drinks, it doesn't mean they're intoxicated, but?
Is he planning on testifying, counsel?
He is, and I think that may be a better, better time.
Okay, all right, then I'd like clarification, according in our documents, you hire contractors or you have employees, were these women contractors or employees?
They had simply auditioned that they are allowed to work the shift, but they weren't actually hired yet for anything.
And again, that might be a better question for whether they're case in chief, and so right now is my case in chief, meaning I'm presenting evidence, and then they will have a chance to present their evidence as to maybe why they're less called or not called.
I see, thank you.
So I do have, I guess, if we could have just a brief minute without questions, so he doesn't have to double listen, just give me one second, do you want to go out here?
Officer, I believe we're kind of done with?
We gotta wait for Nick.
We gotta wait for him.
Yeah. Then you can go back, back to work. Break, you know?
Um, yes, there's one more officer outside.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not as familiar as you might be with your police system, right? Is this the CAD data, meaning the caller, generated dispatch?
Yeah, this is the, the call screen for that incident.
Okay, so when did this call come in, if this is generally accurate?
So our call notes first got the call at 2114, which is 9:14 PM.
Generally, when did this incident take place, if we know?
The initial, on the video, the timestamp showed, I believe, the initial stuff started about 9:10.
9:10, okay.
There, there may be a way to see, you're right, you're talking about when officers also arrived.
I was going to ask that, when they arrived, yeah, I just didn't, you know?
So, yeah, there's a way you can go to.
I might not have access to it, though. Oh, oh, that's just the cops, I never go that. If you can't tell, I?
No, I, so the initial unit was dispatched, it says at 2117 hours on here.
Okay.
And then I can find on here where it says the initial units arrived on scene.
So fight starts around 9:10, 9:14 is around when the call comes in?
Yeah, 9:10 was the first start of the fight on the video, 9:14 is when the call came into our dispatcher, or I should say, when they generated the call note, a call entry for it.
Sure, it could have come in, I mean, obviously it would have come in a little bit before that, because they're typing in all that stuff down, okay?
And then the first unit was listed as dispatched at 9:17.
Can you tell if the video that we showed, I stopped that video at 9:14 and 55 seconds, do you know if that was very accurate or somewhat accurate, I mean, did we have any analysis on that?
I, I believe I noted in my report, I'd have to check exactly, but I believe it was consistent with, one of the things, I do a lot of video retrieval, and I've gone to some trainings for that, and one of the things they teach you to note is the DVR time offset, obviously, sometimes people's camera systems are not 100% accurate, they may be off an hour for daylight savings, or the power went out at some point, when it came back on, it wasn't the right time, so I generally attempt to note that when I do a report, just so that there's no confusion later on, if you say this happened at nine, and the video shows nothing at nine o'clock, but I believe in this case, it was?
Generally consistent.
Yeah, pretty accurate for the current time.
All right, and I guess we agreed when we talked that it's unclear where the call originates? Okay, we can't tell if it's an employee or?
There, there should be a phone number in there?
There is, but I checked it.
Oh, okay.
All right, is that?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a follow-up with, can you, when you say generally consistent, are we down to the minute consistent, or are we within a couple of minutes?
Within a minute or two, I'd say.
Okay, so we could be a minute or two either way?
Yeah, I, I generally look at my watch, which, I don't know, my watch versus the dispatch time is, there may be a minute or two discrepancy, but I know that if it's within a couple of minutes, I know that it's generally consistent, whether, again, if it's an hour or 20 minutes off or something, I'll note that as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Any further questions with the?
Chairman Vitale, I have a question, were you first on the scene?
No.
Okay, so when a call comes through and gets dispatched, is it any officer in the area, it gets radioed over, proximity?
We have patrol sections, there's an east, a west, and a center, they generally try to send people to calls in their section if a squad is available, so if a, this is in the east section, this business, so if an east end, or if a call were to come out at the spotlight for whatever reason, they would generally attempt a, or attempt to send a east end squad who's available, you know, not on another call or doing something else. If no east end squads are available, then they'll dispatch someone else from another section. Bigger calls, especially reports of large fights or calls with, you know, more serious injuries and stuff like that, they're going to dispatch a lot more people.
Thank you, officer.
Any further questions, any members?
I have one follow-up based on that question, how many officers, if you recall, were dispatched out to this fight, ballpark?
I'm not sure exactly how many were initially dispatched, but in terms of arrived, I can think of... So myself, Officer Baumgar was there, Officer Casal, Officer Stickle and his trainee at the time, and I believe Officer Lukey, and there may be more, those are just the ones I can recall seeing there offhand.
Six at least that you can recall.
When you arrived, were the ladies gone?
No, when I pulled up, Officer Baumgar was stopping out with the two, the two females that ended up getting arrested, they were walking to their car that was parked on 65th Street.
I see.
So if there's no further question, thank you, Officer Winer.
Thank you.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
All right, and now we'll get to Officer K. Officer K, mind grabbing a seat here, actually, I swear you're in first.
Did you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that testimony shall given this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and just so for all parties playing, I'll start with number eight now, and work my way, eight, nine, 10, 12, and that should be it. All right, so Officer K, how are you employed?
With the City of West Dallas Police Department.
And how long have you been employed with the City of West Dallas Police Department?
Nine years.
All right, we're working back on March 17th around 1:30 AM?
Yes.
All right, and what were your duties on that day?
Assigned to the east end of the city as a general patrol officer.
All right, how, have you been in, is east end where you normally are?
Yes.
Okay, how long have you been in the east end?
About six, five or six years, seven years.
All right, and I'm not going to talk really about anything since January, but at least for the, the spot, but have you had contact there?
The spotlight?
The spotlight, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so if we're talking about on March 17th, what happened on that day to about 1:30?
We were dispatched, we were dispatched to the spotlight for a male who had thrown a drink in the bartender's face.
Okay, do we know who the bartender was?
Audrey Bomback.
Okay, was that guy found on scene?
He was not.
All right, disappeared.
Yeah, he left before officers arrived.
All right, did you talk to Audrey?
I did.
And what, if anything, did Audrey tell you?
She said that there was a individual in the bar that was intoxicated, some sort of, I guess, argument ensued, and he threw a drink in her face and then stole a bottle of Jose Cuervo and left the scene.
All right, any information about how long he had been there, or what he was doing there?
I don't recall that.
Okay, and obviously, since he didn't find him, no citations were issued, correct?
Correct, yes, he left before the, we arrived on scene, we attempted to locate him in the area, which we did not.
Okay, all right, I have nothing further about that incident, I'm going to move on to, well, I guess, for the ease of not getting lost in the process, I'm going to, I will have more questions as we go on, but I think it'd be most appropriate if you want to ask questions, and the committee asks questions per incident, would that be okay?
That's fine.
Okay, all right, I don't have any questions about the March 17th incident.
I have no questions on the March 17th issue.
Mr. Chair? Is there any video from that incident?
I would say, like, we, the police do not have any video from that incident.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions with the?
Chairman Vitale?
Yes.
Was it noted by the bartender that this person first time in, or was any familiarity?
I don't recall that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question with the members? So the counsel, any questions?
No, I think the officer for this incident is?
All right, very good, thank you, I'm going to move on to the May 24th interaction. Sir, I guess I'm calling on you for this one here, based on your past experience, and then as, as kind of maybe a catch-all officer, but have you had a chance to review the reports for the May 24th incident?
Yes, I read the reports.
All right, and are you aware of Officer Kyle Webster?
Yes.
All right, have you worked with Kyle Webster before?
We were hired together, actually, so?
Yes, so you're, most of your law enforcement career, you've been with Officer Webster, in one capacity or another?
Correct, he works a different shift than I do, though.
All right, on the May 24th, 2021, why were officers dispatched out to the spotlight?
They received a call for someone who had overdosed.
Okay, was that individual able to be revived or brought back?
Yes.
Oh, so?
Through the use of Narcan.
Okay, and what is Narcan?
It's a drug that, you know, people use to reverse the effects of opiates in the system.
Okay, and was there any other reasons that officers were called over there?
Theft of money.
Money, okay, from that individual?
From the individual who had overdosed.
Okay, so this, this person, was that an employee there?
It doesn't say specifically in the report, but by the context of the report, it appears so.
Okay, and, and guess how was she associated with, this was, how was this individual supposed to be with the bar?
In the report says, like, she was behind the bar, which to me would be indicate that she, yeah, some sort of either employment there, or maybe knows the owners or something to that effect, her purse was behind the bar, this is where she passed out from her opioid overdose.
Okay, and was, did officers investigate how, I guess, what, did she make a statement about how she believed she became unconscious?
Yes, the report says that she believes she had been drugged throughout the, while she was at the spotlight.
Okay, did officers kind of investigate or try to look into that issue?
They did.
And were they able to definitively say one way or the other what happened?
They reviewed video surveillance from the spotlight, and from what the report said, the officer did not see, I believe her name was Samol Nye, is that how, I'm not sure about the pronunciation, S-A-M-O-L, and then N-Y, is how her name is spelled, but he reviewed the video surveillance and did not observe her drink anything in the hour prior to this incident happening, but although he did indicate that she left behind the bar a few times and went out? But although he did indicate that she left behind the bar a few times and went outside, so she was out of camera view a few times.
All right. And now she was okay, she got brought back, and...
You're right. She was Narcaned. I'm not sure by who, whether it was, you know, an employee, a patron, or the police, or the paramedics. It doesn't really indicate that in the report. But she was brought, she did not die, she was revived, and they spoke to her while she was in the ambulance.
Okay. And then officers are trying to figure out what's going on there, right? So there's other officers that get dispatched to the scene to make contact with employees?
Correct.
All right. And were all employees cooperative at that point?
I believe there was a employee there who was the suspect of this case. Her name was...
I guess I don't need names.
Okay. The suspect of this case, who was also going behind the bar and, at one point, took the victim's purse from behind the bar and was carrying it around for an extended period of time, and even was observed on the video surveillance going in the victim's purse, retrieving identification card and producing it to the police.
Was there an individual that kind of stayed in the back and wouldn't come out?
Yes, there was also another potential employee. I believe they said that she was auditioning for, to be in an employee, that initially refused to come out and cooperate with officers, give a statement to officers, but eventually came out, but still refused to give a statement to the police.
Generally, what was the quantity of money, if we know, that was alleged to be taken?
There's some discrepancy. I don't know if you caught it in the report, so it might have been just a typing error, but $1,200 was what it was wrote initially, and then later in the report it says $1,500, so...
Somewhere between $1,200 and $1,500 bucks.
Correct.
All right. I have no further questions about this incident.
Any questions, the members? Or the counsel?
Just a few to clarify. So the employee that the police suspected and saw take her person going in is the one who refused to cooperate?
No, that was a different employee.
Okay.
Although, I should say, they tried to contact the employee you're talking about that took the victim's purse and was seen carrying it around and letting her person get the ID of the victim.
Who tried to contact them?
After the fact, I don't know if it was the same day or days later, they tried to call her with the information she provided the police, and the police were unable to make contact with her. So they're never able to, I guess, question her in regards to anything further. So I would say, yeah, she was uncooperative in that, in that...
She was. And then the other one had said that she was auditioning that night?
Yeah, that's what the report indicates. She was auditioning to be employed there. The one that refused, initially refused to come out of the back and then came out and refused to give a statement.
Did the investigation ask the bar for any of the contact information they may have had on the employee?
Which employee?
The one who was seen going into the girl's purse?
I don't recall.
Talk offline, we may want to see if you have something that can assist in that. The bar, the, the girl behind, the girl who received a Narcan injection will just basically say was the bartender, for ease of this. She, she told you at the time, though, that she did not take him, she believed she had been given something?
I just want to reiterate, I was never at the scene. I'm testifying on behalf of Officer Webster. But from the reports, that's what I read and that's what it indicated.
Okay.
That she denied using narcotics, and that she believed she was drugged.
Okay. And Officer, sorry, is Webster?
Kay, I'm Kay.
No, 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 no. Webster was the other officer?
The officer, yes.
Okay. And you, you went to the academy with him, you worked with him for nine years, you trust him?
Not the academy, we didn't go together, but we were hired together, yes. I trust him, he's trustworthy police officer.
Okay. We're good on that. Besides this incident, you worked the area, have you ever had interactions with Ed or Lonny?
Yes.
Have they ever been disrespectful to you?
No, they usually help or provide information that we need, especially regards to video surveillance.
Okay. And did they turn over all the video surveillance equipment?
The equipment?
Mm-hmm. Or the videos of the incident?
Of this incident? Yeah, it appears so. The officer indicates that he watched the video in regards to this incident and then was able to get a copy of it.
I have no further questions.
Chair.
Questions, yes, all in this.
So we have no idea what kind of drugs this person was revived from? Okay. Okay.
I would...
I guess, if that's a question, I'll let the officer answer it, yeah.
My, basically, my question is, was it IV use, smoke use, pill use? That's what I'm getting at.
I'm not sure of that, but it's some sort of opioid, because the way Narcan works, it's only effective on the reversal of...
Right.
Too much opioids in your system.
Okay. Thank you.
All the presentation.
I just had noted, just for reflection, the name from this particular incident, Samol, and looking at the other testimony from the other officers, are these separate incidences with the same individual? That would be my question. Okay. So this is clearly an employee that we're speaking about.
And just for the record, I believe Samol is the same bartender who eventually is in that fight that we watched the video on.
That's my...
That would be, that would be correct on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that incident with the fight, and Samol was allegedly the one who overdosed.
We will have a discussion during our case in chief on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on number nine?
Actually, I have one more question for the officer. I know that counsel had stated, has the owners ever been uncooperative? I guess the one question I have, in your dealings with the spot, in spotlight, are a lot of your calls related to overly intoxicated patrons?
I would say, while I work third shift, so generally, anyone that we deal with is impaired, whether it's drugs, alcohol, or a combination of both, and I would say it's no different than, like, they're no exception. So, yeah, I would say generally, yes.
So my follow-up question to that would be, this establishment is any different than any other one that you would frequent, say, any other...
In regards to, like, intoxication levels or something? Yeah, no, I would say it's, it's same. It's not, there's not, it's not like, people are way more intoxicated at spotlight, or way more intoxicated at a different bar, but just generally...
But the amount of calls that you have to this establishment compared to the others, is there a percentage that you could give?
Oh, I, that would be a total guess if I had to say, but I will say, on third shift, at least, it seems like we respond there, just anecdotally, you know, at least, like, once a month, it seems like, whether it's just for something, it doesn't rise to the, you know, or doesn't rise to something like we're dealing with now, or it could just be, you know, someone outside playing loud music in their car that just came from the spotlight or something, but either which way, we usually go there on third shift, at least about once a month.
Okay. Thank you.
So I had been a court officer, Kyle, for a long time, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's not something just happens once a year, or twice a year?
Correct. But like I said, that once a month estimate is just, you know, what it seems like to me, anecdotally, from what, from my experience.
Thank you.
I just, I had a couple of follow-up questions. To follow up on that, is that more or less than you see for other bars?
We go to the spotlight more than other bars.
And then to follow up on Alderman Stefanski's questions, talking about Narcan, you said that it only works on opiates. Is that something that you know from your training from?
That's how it was explained to us when we were trained on how to utilize it. Now, I don't, I'm not a doctor or anything like that, so I can't speak to any of that stuff, but for our, just simple, you go somewhere and it appears that someone's in some sort of overdosed state, you, you give them this Narcan and it immediately reverses the effects of it and brings them back to life, for lack of a better way of saying it. Now medically, can they use it for other things? I don't know. I'm not...
And is that, has always kind of been your experience when you use, you've used Narcan?
Yeah, it's really crazy if you've never seen it before, you have someone that's laying there, looks like they're dead, and you use this Narcan, and less than a minute later, they're sitting up talking to you.
That's all I had.
When you arrived, how many people were behind the bar?
I wasn't on this specific case. Officer Webster was the primary officer.
I see.
I'm just filling in for him. So I wasn't even at the spotlight for this case. So I don't know, I can't answer that.
Am I allowed to ask who's allowed behind the bar in this establishment?
Well, we are going to have, we're going to have some other people that work there, so we can maybe ask them.
All right. Thank you.
So if there's no further questions?
I have, I have another, more incidents to go on.
One more incident.
Yes. Two, I think, actually, yeah. All right. We're going to the June...
Counsel? I guess we may want to have the chair do an extension, as I think we are pretty close to the time. I don't know with the cross-exam.
And I totally get it. In terms of, and I've been trying to be mindful of that, too, in terms of my hour or so case, but it doesn't include questioning by other parties, and so my, my presumption is I'm still under. I would say I probably have another 10 minutes.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't objecting to you taking as much time as you need, I was just saying, just because on the thing it may look at, so maybe we ask the chair to just allow an extension. I don't have any objection.
Okay. Again and now.
Very good. Thank you. And I will, I will wrap it up promptly.
Again, I'm, I'm not trying to push you on your case.
Understood. Hi.
Close meeting?
Nope. Open meeting.
Cool.
Should we help you with anything, or just...
Scene's dropping.
Very good. All right. All right. So on June 7th, did you review that report?
Yes.
All right. And who was the primary officer on that incident?
Officer Santa Cruz Medina.
And have you worked with Officer Santa Cruz Medina previously?
Yes.
All right. And in what capacity have you worked with Officer Santa Cruz Medina?
We worked third shift together, and we both work the east end of the city. We're both patrol officers, so I work with him a lot.
Have you investigated cases together or utilized his work in the past?
Yes.
All right. And have you found that to be reliable in the past?
Yes.
All right. So on June, yeah, June 7th, what was the incident that the officers were dispatched out to for the spotlight?
It was disorderly conduct complaint between, well...
Go ahead.
Get into the complaint more, it's between two individuals fighting.
All right. Were any of the individuals associated with or employed at the bar?
One of them was. One was a patron. The two individuals, well, they're both males, involved in the physical altercation, one of which was an employee who was not on duty.
Okay. So one was employee, not on duty, one was just a patron generally?
Correct. But I believe he's a somewhat of a regular there.
Okay. And what happens in this interaction?
There's some sort of argument that ensues, according to the report, and it's over an incident that occurred approximately a month prior between these two individuals, where they get in each other's face, and the off-duty employee, I think his name was Nate Mullins, shoved this patron to the ground during which a chair fell over, and the patron suffered a laceration or cut to above his eye, and his glasses were broken during, during, during the incident.
And were, was the bar cooperative to the extent that they provided that surveillance video?
Yes.
All right. And did officers, not you, but officers, review that video?
Officer Santa Cruz Medina reviewed the video.
All right. And did you review the report and his recitation of what that appeared to be?
Yes.
All right. And was that consistent with kind of how you just described it?
Yeah, that's pretty much exactly what happened.
All right. Any citations, if you know, issued from this?
Yes, that off-duty employee, Nate Mullins, was, later issued a citation for disorderly conduct.
All right. I don't have any further questions about that incident.
Any further questions, the members? The new officer, Kyle.
You forget about him.
I mean, I know you asked me. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I actually, on this one, I think that this is, was there an extension? You didn't see the video?
I did not view the video.
Okay. So I really can't go into a lot of the details besides that, so I will just leave it at where it is.
You know, counsel, if you really define, and I want to be straightforward in questions of the, the amount of activities really has been happened on 64 in West Queen Philadelphia in the spotlight, you know, and been, I believe, more than any other establishments within our community, really, in all fairness. And I'm not trying to, you know, ban out the spotlight, but, but the fact of it is that we encourage, we encourage police times for their locations more than the others. I mean, that's, that's my biggest concern, really, as, as a representative from the district and West Dallas, just as well. Thank you.
I have one more incident to go through quickly, if...
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
If I can.
Sure.
All right. And lastly, August 28th, you were the actual officer on that incident, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And August 28th, what happened?
We responded to the spotlight for a shooting.
A shooting. All right. And upon investigating that shooting, what did you determine happened?
One of the employees, and a dancer, had been shot in the foot by a patron of the bar.
Okay. Did you make contact with that employee or the dancer?
Yes.
All right. Does she know this guy?
She had known him for a few days, about approximately four days, I believe.
Okay. And how did they, or why were they at the bar together?
So she was working at the spotlight. She invited this individual she had just met a few days ago to come and watch, watch her while she worked.
Okay. Did she have any comment or make any statements about how long he was there or what he was doing there?
He was there for, I can't remember specifically, but for a fair amount of time to where she indicated that he drank a lot while he was at the spotlight.
Okay. Okay. And did some type of altercation or something occur between these two?
So then, like, they must have been interested in one another, that's why he came to see her, but then while he was there, from what I gather, he was talking to other dancers, which created this tension or argument between them, and I don't know if she was off-shift or during a break or whatever, she went out, they went out to his car, which is parked on 65th Street, north of Greenfield, right next to the Spotlight, where they talked. And during this conversation, he produced a handgun and fired it at her feet, striking one of them, I believe it was her right foot.
Right foot, I think that, I believe the report says toe area.
Yeah, the big toe.
Okay. And this is a fairly lengthy report, so I guess, did you have any other interactions with employees or patrons at the bar from that evening?
Not really, because I was one of the first ones to arrive on scene, and I immediately tended to the victim, the individual who was shot, and then went with her into the ambulance, and then to freighter.
Okay. And where was she when you found her?
In the entrance, exit vestibule area.
Of the bar?
Correct.
Okay. And did officers make contact with this other guy?
The shooter?
Yeah.
Eventually.
Eventually, all right, that evening?
No, about a week later, the investigation was turned over to our detective bureau, who did their investigation, were able to identify who the shooter was, they wrote a warrant, our SWAT team went and executed a search warrant, arrest warrant, and arrested the shooter.
Okay. Had an initial call for service, about how many officers showed up?
Every one that was working.
Okay.
I would say...
Is that normal for a shooting?
Yeah, I mean, eight, nine, maybe, depends, however many would work in that evening.
And, all right, so I'm gonna do like a general overview here, and I know some of the questions from the older persons already kind of talked about that, but you had said that in your time kind of investigating and being out in this district, this isn't, is that people that are more intoxicated in that location, is that kind of the...
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I can't sit in here in good faith and say, oh, you're more, people are more drunk at the Spotlight than they are at, you know, name another tavern on the east end of the city, but I would say that we respond to the Spotlight more often than any other bar, or restaurant, or tavern, whatever you want to call it.
The severity of those calls, is that consistent with other bars, or is that different from other bars in your experience?
I can't, I would say, at the Spotlight, there's more serious calls.
Okay, from your opinion?
Yes, anecdotally, just from what I know and what my experience being on third shift for nine years and six, or whatever it was, on the east end of the city.
All right, I believe that gets me through the factual allegations on the complaint, I have no further questions for this officer.
Do we have a question for the counsel?
So Officer, did the gentleman bring her to the bar?
No, oh wait, I don't recall, I'm sorry, she may, he may have, but I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, but they had a relationship of some sort, no matter how short, prior to him showing up at the bar that night?
Right, from what I remember is that they met, I believe it said four days earlier, she said four days earlier, you know, were at her grandma's residence, that's what it was, that's what she said.
Okay.
Where they exchanged phone numbers.
And is this guy a local resident, or is he... How does it date?
I believe he's from, originally from Illinois. But currently Milwaukee resident.
Okay. Did she explain if they had, had like a level of confrontation in the bar, like besides, you know, to the degree of the fight that was shown earlier, did they just have more of a heated discussion and then went outside?
That wasn't, I don't, that wasn't really, I guess, asked or answered.
And West Dallas has the common ordinance that people need to go outside to smoke, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is it common for you to see people outside of bars smoking?
Yes.
How many of the calls, you said that you're doing roughly a call a month, or there are about, how many of those are from the bar itself?
Like where an employee calls, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Like an employee calls? I'm not too sure on that. Of those, one a month anecdotally that we deal with on third shift, I couldn't say whether they're employees or patrons or passerbys.
Okay, would the police prefer the bar to deal with issues, or for you to be called?
I mean, I guess that's not for me to say, I'm not administrator or the chief of police, or anything like that, I do what is told or required of me.
Okay, so if a bouncer jacks somebody out, let's just say, outside, that wasn't related to the premise, would they have legal protection?
Jacks, what do you mean by jacks?
Well, they're not leaving, so they go across the street and get into an argument with the person.
I was, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I would say wants to remove from the residence, if they go across the street and confront the person across the street, the bouncer's gonna have some problems.
Okay. And any other time have either, since, either Ed or Lonnie refused to give the police any level of cooperation?
From my dealings with them?
Your dealings, or even rumor?
No, usually they're cooperative, or usually, you know, give the information that we need, or video surveillance that we need.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'll listen first.
When you came and found the person who was shot in the foot, was there any employee inside the vestibule area helping this person?
There was an employee in the vestibule area, not per se helping, but just there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on the committee members?
Did the police determine if it was an accident that this occurred?
So I actually asked her that specifically, do you think he intentionally shot you? And she was unsure. She was unsure if he did it because he was maybe, they were in an argument and he fired the ground off, or he was so intoxicated and was just trying to intimidate her and the gun inadvertently went off, but either which way, she was shot in the foot by an intoxicated party that ensued from an argument from within the Spotlight.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Vitale?
Yes, I'll listen first. We discussed a lot, I just need to go back to the fact, she brought this gentleman to the establishment to watch her work, so she was working that evening.
From what I was told, yes, but I would say she didn't bring him there, now I'm recalling correctly, I think she called, or they had spoken earlier and like said, I'm working, and then he showed up while she was at work.
Okay, so they didn't, they didn't arrive together?
No.
She was working her shift.
Right.
Okay, and he showed up to the establishment?
Correct.
Was the victim intoxicated? Had she been drinking herself?
I don't think she was intoxicated, if I recall correctly, she may have said she drank one drink.
Okay.
Maybe if I remember correctly, but that's not 100 percent.
Okay, thank you.
Is there no further questions?
I have nothing further, that's the city's case in chief address subject to rebuttal.
Are you gonna release Officer Kay or...
I'll have to talk with you quick about that, are you on shift tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to you quick.
Maybe recess for like ten minutes?
Sure, if anybody's, I mean, up to the...
Do we have an objection to recessing for just about two minutes?
No, no, I'm not objecting at all. I was gonna ask for just a hair longer, since we've offered the thing, and see if there's anything based on their testimony that we want to go into a little bit more.
And I have no objection if, I mean, five, seven minutes if they want a conference, I know it's getting a little bit late, but obviously they...
Yeah, we could do that.
Go ahead.
Okay.
How much time are you looking for?
Just about five minutes.
No problem.
Yeah, they were, they were trying to keep some notes as we went along.
Okay.
Thank you.
That gives us a little break as well. Should I have to...
Thanks, officer.
Oh my God, how embarrassing, this is so...
I'm gonna go.